Can I ask for any members who may wish to speak? So we've got a few councillors. Okay, first speaker, councillor Lewis.
Thank you all. The first time I spoke in this chamber, I actually talked about human poverty and about sex people. And I'm saying this is my last time to speak in this chamber. It feels rather fitting. Yeah, thanks very much for that. It feels rather fitting. I should be talking about climate change. Something that's been quite close to my professional life at the time on council as well. I used to be the North West Chair of the Transport and Climate Change Committee. And so I'm quite involved in a lot of the things that have gone around the North West on this. I'm not going to go through all the things that we've done in terms of transport and air quality. You can look in the document, which I actually think is a really good document, if you get a chance to look at sections D3 and D7, to look at transport and air quality. I'm also really pleased that we've recognised that some things that we do to tackle climate change are not actually compatible with how we tackle air quality and vice versa. And one of those things, for instance, is electric vehicles. As we move towards more electric vehicles, we know we'll see high demands for materials such as compost and the disastrous industry that that is in places like the Congo, where we see 40,000 kids working down lines in order... So you can have your smartphones and you can have your electric cars. Which brings me up to something else, which I will talk about in this section. And that is that the poor don't use much fossil fuels. They don't really have access. They don't have car... The poor don't have cars. The poor try and eat their homes as best as they can, and they don't use fossil fuels. If you've got anywhere in life, certainly in the developed world, if you've got there because you've been able to use fossil fuels, you have to be very careful when you start lecturing people out there about their fuel use amongst all of this debate. Because the poor are the ones who are both suffering and not have access. And if we just pull the ladder up behind us, then that does no one any favors. I would like to finally talk about something which is not mentioned in any of the papers, but we really need to get real about, and that's climate change adaptation. We can talk all we want about how we're going to reduce carbon emissions and the actions that we wish to take. Unless we get real about accepting that we need to adapt already, then we will be failing in our duty. Many years ago, I worked on a project that ended up being the Workside Climate Just, which looked at vulnerability and I looked at different ways of considering vulnerability. That is, the ability to prepare, the ability to respond, the ability to recover. And that doesn't necessarily follow that just because you're poor, you're vulnerable. If you have got a three-car family and you've got no access to public traffic, because you've never actually used it, if there's an incident in your area, you're incredibly vulnerable. So we need to get the message out there to those people who may feel like they're quite protected from all of this, that climate change is going to affect them as well. So as I leave this chamber at some point, I personally like to thank everyone who's up along the way. It'll take far too long to go to do that. I'd like to thank my more colleagues, specifically Ross and Irene, for all the help that they've been over the years. And I would wish everybody in this chamber well in taking on something as big as climate change, but also the many other problems that we're going to have to deal with along the way and find the balance to do that. Thank you.
Councillor Lee Robinson.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. And it's a real tough ask to follow Jimmy on this one, because he really is a true expert on this issue. And genuinely, it'd be a great, great loss, not just for this council, but for this city. So all the very best for the future, mate. And you'd really well done for playing the trophy on this agenda. I would say a few things about not just what I'm doing on transport, but absolutely what more we need to do. Because I go around this country, and I'm very proud to say that I think we've got one of the best transport networks in this country outside of London. But frankly, we have to deal with the legacy of deregulation and privatisation by international organisations. And let's acknowledge that, because there's so much best practice that's happening in other parts of the world. We really, really have to catch up. So let's not bleat about the problem with that. Let's move away from the rest of the nonsense and do things differently. For me, there's lots of different things we've got to do. First and foremost, we've got to make public transport the first choice. There's great stuff we're doing, like running new publicly owned trains on the version of our network that will attract loads of new passengers onto the network, starting from next year. But that's only anything good if you are on the road network. We genuinely need to be thinking about how we extend that network. So we do need to be looking at the ways we extend the network into East Liverpool, like Harry talks about, North Liverpool, like Ian talks about, and making sure everyone gets those connections. And that's not just a thinking. We've just reopened a link to North Wales we've not had for 40 years. We do have the credibility and the backing of the track record to do that. Loads of things we've got to do with buses. We should be proud about the fact that 70% of the fleet locally is low emission. But that isn't enough. We'd really need to move to zero emissions. And when lots of people say to me, "Why aren't we doing exactly what we're doing in Manchester", let me be very, very clear. The legislation that follows these new powers, powers and dynamics inside of their back, is really, really complicated, and I think deliberately so, because the Tory government don't want us to use it. Let me assure you, in the coming months, we will be bringing back some really visionary proposals about how we can take our bus network forward. And a key part of that needs to be about how we make public transport more affordable. Frankly, it's too expensive. Far too many can't afford to use it, and those people who can are chased away because it's not seen as good value. We really need to address that. And again, we've got a great track record. Because when we cut fares for kids on buses, what do we do? We've doubled the number of kids using the bus network. It's an economic no-brainer. We just need to crack on and do these kind of things. Cycling, again, this is something that we need to do a lot more of. It's fantastic when we look at some of the recent announcements about how we're actually going to be rolling out more segregated cycleways. 55 kilometres across our region. Talking in the paper about being able to ride, we speak for the city centre. But you know what? That's going to continue all work to come for. Real great start on how we can extend our cycling network. But you know what? We've got to emulate Seville on this. They had a fantastic plan to put in place a cycling superhighway network over a decade. Because they had the vision, they did it in two. So we need to become a Scouse cycling Seville to make sure we give people safe options to ride their bikes. One of the things we really got to focus on is the movement of goods and freight. It really troubles me when we look at the number of vans and trucks running out of the road network in our city. If we were to open up the back of all those vans and trucks, you would find that most of those are actually mainly empty. We've really got to consolidate all of that. And I'll finish with a few points on two elements. One of the things I request is we've got to make sure that we evolve on this. Some of this stuff will be really difficult. We've really got to be really, really brave, and we've got to leave by example. Thank you.
Councillor Tormi, can I advise councillor... This is councillor Tormi's first speech, so can we pay attention? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Okay, so basically, thank you all there. But just my speeches regarding the fact that we're building the top 10 air pollution in the UK, the cities and towns. Basically, air pollution is affecting the health of people in Liverpool. It affects the youngest, the oldest, and the poorest the most. It's linked to premature birth and stunted number of children as real danger to those with heart or lung condition. In the Liverpool city region, there's a record 225,400 people have cardiovascular heart disease and around 42,800 people have chronic stroke of pulmonary disease yearlyly. Finally, air particle air pollution, particularly bad for us, penetrates deep into your lungs and the cardiovascular systems, causing diseases including strokes, heart disease, lung cancer, and respiratory infections. The way of health and organisation reports that Liverpool is in the top 10 as I mentioned before, and the figure exceeds the limits of 10 micrograms per cubic metre. Liverpool's rating at the moment is currently 12 cubic metres near the microgram per cubic metre of nitrogen dioxide over the chemicals in the air. London is only 11, so a lot higher than that. This now brings me on to another issue with regards to this. Liverpool councillors have closed down all the AURN networks with white hair in the city. At city centre, Queen's Drive, leaving one in a field in a primary school with quite essential classes to speak. So is that 12,000 totally wrong? So it means there's nothing in the city is regarded as that's correct? The station closed, if I want to, another issue. The Haywire one has been closed, which also is known to be a big force for smoking. So I also feel potentially we'll have a risk of causing more harm to the environment than good. It's also closed here in Liverpool Centre and along Queen's Drive. What I'd like us all to do here is to monitor the air pollution levels facing outside each local school in the area. We are currently closed monitoring stations. And Mayor Anderson mentioned earlier about the clean air house that was actually repealed in 1993. So I'd like to push again for that to be put into place. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tormi, and well done. We now have councillor Steve Rattler.
My love Mayor, it's been a little bit too many of the contributions. Well, I was involved when we had the, I would say, slightly classical consultation over around to a football ground going on Stanley Park. And every point was made about how measures to improve public transport or alleviate congestion were going to be made. Now, I'd actually like to put on record our thanks to all those Anfield campaigners who trudge against a torrent of abuse and aggravation of how they are stopping economic environment. We've now seen the new Anfield stadium at a much better location, the park is saved. But what we haven't seen is the reopening of the Booty Branch Line. The biggest congestion in my district, Anfield, Walton and Clubmore, on match lanes is all the traffic coming off the motorway. It's not just congestion and pollution for Anfield and North Liverpool. It's a congestion of all the motorway network, all the way up to Liverpool. And why hasn't it happened? It was discussed. It was promised. I remember the planning committee by Eddie Clyde that voted through lock, stop and barrel, and how we were told by the highway department, these extra state agencies wouldn't create any more car congestion. I'm still trying to work that one out. But most people were there. Now we've done it politically and geographically. But the problem hasn't. The problem hasn't. We've got a single solution. And I know when we... I was actually involved in the building of the specifications for the way which a technology station. The main cost was actually the station. Well, on the Booty Branch Line, there are actually landed platforms that lack the true market, who kept the land of Dorset Road, Dorset House, sorry, clear, so that the station could go on the level, minimising the station costs. There are station platforms still actually in outline on Cherry Lane, where there was a previous station. So we could actually create a relatively modest cost at reopening the Booty Branch Line that would actually give people access to employment without the need of cars. Councillor Lewis talked about human poverty. Well, we could connect a lot of the North City people to employment zones. We can actually reduce the car congestion in North City and do what was promised at the consultation for Anfield Football Ground years ago. And I still am frustrated. It's still happening here.
Thank you, councillor Rattler.
Well, I can ask you a point of honour. Are we going to be discussing all those issues about this in a long time? Have you got more city in common?
Mayor Anderson.
A couple of things up for me. Full of ideas, just to make a couple of points. Can I just say, councillor Lewis has been excellent, not just as a cabinet member in this area, but as a councillor and as a colleague. And I'm sure you want to have a little future of this stillness as well. Just a couple of things for you. Okay, the sites that you're talking about, councillor, where we could find us the city council by that. So there was different ways of measuring air quality. They were removed by us strong. Let's make that absolutely clear. I know you were unfair and it wasn't, but simply it wasn't what it probably wasn't. Well, look, there's a number of things that have been talked about. And, you know, Liam talked about, for instance, the situation that we face with the current legislation in regards to our transport and deregulation. We are basically stupid unless we get the powers that have been promised to us to actually take back into public domain here the whole transport network. And I need the whole transport network. We have the obscenity of cities like Liverpool paying £13 million a year to subsidise pensioners' travel. And yet Dutzbar make billions of pounds worth of profits across the whole of Europe and the whole of its network. Absolutely obscene. And we need it changing. And that's why we need to bring transport back into public ownership so that we can actually deal with that particular issue. But also, let's not dismiss the things that we can do equally. We failed as a city region for swaddling when we didn't actually set up a transport light rail network tram 15, 16 years ago. We should have grasped it, and we could have built on it, and we could have done something with it. And it was the political infighting of city region local authorities arguing against each other that stopped us. And now we have a city region with the ability to borrow lots of money to start making a huge difference. Investing in those industries that are going to actually make a real difference in this area. That's the type of thinking that we've got to do. And Tom, coming back to your contribution before, I accept the little jabs about what we can and what we can't do. But now that we have got climate change recognised by government in all of these areas that we're now talking about, we can force change, and we're happy to lead the way, and we're happy to invest in what we can to do things. What we've got to do is make sure that we know exactly what it is we need to do and what we're talking about. I'm sure we can do that in the discussions and in the debates that we have, which Laura Collins will monitor as the Climate Select Committee looks at those four theme days moving forward.
Thank you. Councillor Keyes.
It's councillor Keyes, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, of course, I will welcome tonight's declaration of climate emergency in Liverpool. It would be a massive step forward if we all commit to putting the environment at the heart of our decision-making. I'm looking forward to seeing bold actions and a rethink of several policies and decisions. For example, the recently announced city centre connectivity scheme is likely to put even more cars on the roads because losing the A2C and A2D bus service will totally disconnect many communities in the south of Liverpool from their places of work, the hospital, the university, places of leisure like the Fairmoud and the Empire, and places of onward travel like the lunch station. Similarly, last May, groups like Drive and Jor Carriageway are a regressive step and an open invitation for yet more cars to drive into the city centre and pollute many neighbourhoods on their way. We are looking to ditch the car escape approach and put pedestrians, cyclists, and public transport first. Bus priority needs to be looked at again, so the cycling infrastructure. Current plans need to become far more ambitious and include building better, separately protected cycling and walking infrastructure, often by reclining road space from cars, and design the road space so as to emphasise it is for maximum efficiency of transporting people, not cars. Imposing a 20 mile per hour speed limit in city centre and major shopping areas would be a good start, to be followed by looking at all other city roads that are not currently 20 mile per hour. We need to do everything possible to disincentivise car travelling into the city centre. In this chamber, we can lead by example immediately and agree to track a privilege that all households are entitled to, namely free car parking in the city centre. A big elephant in the room, not even mentioned in the briefing notes for this meeting, is the cruising industry. Whilst we are all very proud of how attractive Liverpool is to overseas visitors, we have to agree that cruise ships are a major pollutant, and we cannot be serious about tackling climate emergency without dealing with this issue. Same goes for the expansion of Liverpool Airport. I sincerely hope that the soon to be formed Climate Change Committee will give these issues very serious consideration. When we all agree tonight that we are facing climate emergency, let's ensure all our policies cook the environment first and that this meeting does not become another talking shop but a start of doing things differently. We don't have much time left, but we can do it if we put all our efforts into it.
Thank you. Councillor Lizane.
Hello. I'm going to be quite brief, and I'm going to go quite big. This climate catastrophe is a classic issue, and I think we need to realise that. And it affects working class people more than it affects anyone else. In this city, we are already seeing the worst air pollution in the poorest areas and across the world, in the global self. They are already seeing the mass effects of climate change. So I think we need to put it in that perspective. It's a catastrophe that's been caused by the capitalist system that we're currently dealing under. With the six biggest corporations are the largest polluters on the planet. So we can't do it as individuals. We need to tell these corporations and stop what they are doing to humanity and animals across the globe. We need to have structural change in order to avoid this catastrophe. We need socialism. Green houses built by our council for the people in this city. Local community cooperatives growing through locally. Publicly owned green energy companies providing electricity for Liverpool. Free transport all provided by national transport across the country. So we're doing an amazing thing today, but we can't do it alone. So we need to think about it in the larger context. So I applaud what we're doing today, but we can't do it unless we see a real change across this country and across the world.
Councillor Benegas.
Just a quick one. Councillor Rattler's left the chamber now, but it was just a point of thought that was connected. We spoke about before by Liam. The link line over passenger transport, the trains, being set up the hot square linking the Royal Rail. And the reason that we spoke about it when Liverpool were originally moving at the ground and we couldn't put in the rails, not because the Goodstair was closed, not because the whole link, the loop was closed. And that has necessitated large good squares come out of Liverpool docks having to roll to Edgell and go up and then come back down into the city to turn around and go out onto the line because the whole loop was closed. And while they were doing that, that could down on a number of trains that could actually go the other way down to the Goodstair line. And that's why that line never went. We started working on it then, and now the loop line, the loop line of the whole loop was being opened. That's why there's now consideration for being able to put passenger trains back onto that line. Because that was one of the things then, so link the south end of the city to the north end of the city to create passenger trains, the time on the line, to create passenger trains. So the unemployed centres up to where the job we've got to be creating, and that's all ahead. It was not nothing to do with the line being closed. It was to do with not having the facilities to be able to run the lines through because the freight trains coming in and out of Seaford didn't have passenger trains surrounding. And it's a pity that Steve's not up now because he might have been there for either the Ward Council or the Ward Council of the Town who knew what was going on.
Thank you. Councillor Benegas. Councillor Pampas.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Change has to happen. We all know this, and it's not going to be easy. We don't have all the answers, but this is not a reason not to act, nor is it a reason to carry on in the same way. Assistants, practices, and behaviours have developed without consideration of the impact on the planet. Change will really inconvenience many and could also cause real problems for some people. And we won't know all of those problems all as yet. Disabled people are more reliant on cars than on disabled people. When I was on the Transport Committee, I had great support from councillor Robinson and colleagues to ensure that the new trains will be fully accessible for disabled people and the stations will be as well. This means the more disabled people can use them and hopefully not need to use cars. The change to electric cars will be great, but the design of cars does not take account of disabled people either. They won't take a wheelchair, for example. I'd love to have one. Do you have any electric cars that take a wheelchair? Please let me know. Disabled people are overlooked in design time and time again. Many of the buses now are wheelchair accessible in theory, but there's only one space. That space is taken by someone with a child in a buggy. We have to often get into an argument to create that space. But also, I don't want to be the person who pushes somebody with a little child or maybe twins in a buggy off the bus so I can get on. I'd stay in the bus stop because I could almost do that on one occasion. And also, there's the issue of getting to the bus stops or train stations. So that has impacts then on the built environment to make sure that the route is accessible to the stops. Disabled people have been campaigning for accessible transport for over 30 years. And this shows how long it's taken us to get to this point. If it's climate change that gets us there, that's great. Disabled people want to stop what's happening as much as anybody else. But we also need your help to make sure that we can take part in that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Yeah, we have gone over a lot of times, so I'm only going to allow more as we get. And you will get the chance in the next three themes debates to speak if you don't get any chance in this one. So the next person is councillor Steve Rattler.
I think we keep all the breathing promotion, but I'm concerned it doesn't contribute to climate change by becoming more hot air. That's why I welcome the appointment of councillor Robinson and colleagues as a new cabinet member for tackling climate change because I think the climate job is to actually make all our lives extremely difficult. And I know she did that very well, slightly with the mayor, and I think that was a very brave appointment. So, look, I think there's two things we have to do in parallel. One is we have to challenge fundamental assumptions which we all operate by. You have to come up with tactical solutions. And I'll give you three areas. The first is about transport. I think that in the next 20 years, the motorcar will be finished. It shouldn't be finished. I think it will be. I think we should have to use our imagination. And we have to move very quickly in terms of policies. There's no part of our job to help motorcars move through the city quickly. We have to give absolute priorities to the bus. Sales of buses, compared to the cars in the city centre. Certainly, we have to deliver diesel and other vehicles from the city centre. That change is going to happen much quicker than we think. We're going to have to argue about what we're going to have to come up with tactical solutions. Thus, again, a little bit of polarisation after the highways. Highways cares about cars, and motor travel cares about trains and buses getting left out. But we have to come up with tactical solutions. I'm very pleased to sit down with councillor Robinson, and councillor Robinson called us earlier today, to look at some solutions to some of the challenges around bus travel in the south of the city. I think we came up with some ideas that can help address that. Second, it's tourism, I think, which is actually...
Second issue, tourism, I think which is a crucial point. I think we have to start thinking that we actually shouldn't be so much about having tourists come to the city. As actually tourism is a massive contributor to climate change. But we have to have practical solutions. That ranges from tackling in detail the problems that Airbnb are generating in the upper part of the city. In terms of cruise lines, there are things that we can do to mitigate fuel shortages. You can do, we should sure supply, tackle food waste. And I think that's really part of your job, councillor Robinson colleagues, and issue love with it. The third issue is about the way we think about economic policy and economic growth. Because I think we're pretty crazy in the way to think about much of this. We have completely forced measures. So I'll give you a little example that's put to me. A store in Speedy, where people who travel to work there travel miles. And Leo's in Park Road, where three quarters, it's not called Leo's, Tesco, it shows our life, Tesco's in Park Road, where three quarters of labour are local. Any conventional measure of economic performance, we say that store in Speedy has twice the output of the store in Tesco's, which is crazy. The people who work in Speedy are having far longer to work, they can't depend on bus fare. But because they're coming home, they're driving there, that's apparently an economic indicator. That's a mad way to measure things. So we have to think about, really it's about using the Tesco model to bring back the load of fuel to reduce our traffic. That's both.
councillor Moby, can we start?
I'm struggling to wind up yet.
Close the door.
Councillor Hagan, it is a classic issue now. The one way to do that is by actual load control. So there's a lot of challenges that we've got ahead. We've got to change the way we think and challenge a lot of our sugars. That's not going to be easy. It could get a lot worse.
So the next one we have, the next debate is buildings and the built environment. And we have a show for you again.